Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to the May 18th, 2021 Post Falls City Council meeting. Clerk will note that our council members are present. We did start the meeting, the evening tonight, with a workshop on budget. And under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, I want to make an introduction. Joining us tonight from the University of Mary, which is in Bismarck, North Dakota.
Nor Dakota.
North Dakota, we've got a graduate nursing student and Sacred Heart Medical Center employee, Davina Carr. Davina's from Spokane area, so she needs to spend some time in observing leadership. So she's going to spend a few days with the city, and I think most departments have signed up to have her join them. She seems like a very qualified lady, and she told me she's in her third of 11 semesters.
Yeah.
And she only has to travel over to the college, was it once a month or once a semester?
A year.
Once a year.
A year.
So there you go. I asked about Zoom meetings earlier. The world has changed it as we know. So Davina, welcome, and I'm sure the staff will reach out and assist you any way they can. And I will speak for these folks up here. If you have any questions of them, feel free to call them as well, because you'll find them very helpful. We do have a proclamation. Mental health awareness month. Whereas millions of Americans are living with the burden of a mental health problem, they shoulder conditions like depression and anxiety, post-traumatic stress, and bipolar disorder, debilitating illness that constrain every part of a person's life. Whereas even though help is out there, less than half the children and adults with diagnosable mental health problems receive treatment. During Mental Health Awareness Month, we shine a light on these issues, stand with adults and children in need, and redouble our efforts to address mental health concerns. Whereas, we reaffirm our commitment to dispelling stigma around mental illness and reassuring every individual suffering from mental illness that they are not alone. For many, getting help starts with a conversation. People who believe they may be suffering from mental health conditions should talk with it, talk about it with someone they trust, and consult a healthcare provider. Whereas, it is up to all of us to know the signs of mental health issues and lend a hand to those who are struggling. Shame and stigma too often leave people feeling like there is no place to turn. We need to make sure they know that asking for help is not a sign of weakness, it is a sign of strength. Whereas, mental health problems remain a serious public health concern, but together we are making progress, and this month, we can advance this important work by raising awareness about mental health and lending strength to all who need it. Now therefore I, Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Pulse Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim May 20th as Mental Health Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to join us in this worthy observance. We have another introduction to make. Joining us in the back tonight are Angela Snyder and her husband Lane, and you'll see the next item on the agenda is to request the approval of Angela Snyder as her appointment to the Park and Recreation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Further questions? All those in favor? I'm sorry, let's take a roll call. Let's do it like we usually do.
Putting us on the spot.
Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Thank you, Angela, welcome. Thank you for being willing to dedicate your time to assist in Parks and Recreation.
I have to identify that as an action.
And we do have a facilities update. Facilities study update. Mr. Beecham.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. John Beecham, Public Works Director. I'm really only here to make an introduction. For the last few months, we've been doing a facilities needs assessment as part of a facility study citywide. It's been really fun over Zoom, trying to show people our entire facilities on cameras. For the last two days, Julie and Beth have been touring around with us, so we've actually been able to show them the facilities in person, that's great. And they are here to present the Zoom findings slightly updated with in-person data. For your information, we are looking for feedback, but not necessarily any direction tonight. This is just the first of several updates for this facility study.
Thank you. Name for the record, please.
Hi there, I'm Julie Basick with Makers. Thanks for having us tonight. We are very excited to give you all an overview of where we're at with your project. Wanted to introduce ourselves, since this is the first time we will have seen you face to face, so your team is myself, Beth Bachelder, who's with me tonight, and then Cecilia Rousseau, who you may see in the later phases of the project. We are a small women-owned business based in Seattle. We are interdisciplinary architects, landscape architects, planners, and designers, and we focus specifically on citywide facilities plans, master plans, and site plans. So this is exactly the work we love to do, and our main thrust is developing plans that will not sit on the shelf, that can be implemented. So why are these studies a good idea? They are especially important for communities that are expecting a growing demand or changing services. They help you optimize the space that you have and address critical issues with your facilities. They also protect investments you've already made and improve efficiencies within those newer facilities that you have, and they build a case to support investments. We have 22 facilities in scope at five campuses, almost 130,000 square feet, supporting over 180 city staff. You can see the in-scope facilities on the map to the right. Notably, we are not looking at parks, community centers, kind of rec facilities, or infrastructure, wells, wastewater treatment facilities, but everything else is in our scope. Couple things that are notable that facilities' master plans don't do, that I always like to explain at the outset. So this is not a lean Sigma Six study, we're not looking at how to reorg your operations or what to contract out. We're also not correcting today's maintenance headaches. So if something needs a work order, they need to call it in, that's not what this is about. This is longer-term, higher-level, strategic plan level. They're also not designing the facility or guaranteeing funding, so obviously, that's in council's purview. What they do do is analyze how facilities can help improve your operations and your customer service. They define a facility investment strategy to meet future demands that council will then consider as they budget moving forward. And hopefully, they build consensus among all your departments, inform your future decision-making, and build support for funding facilities. So as in the project outset, we spoke with many of your department leaders, and we asked them what would be the big wins in their perspective for the project. They said that they would love to have a one-stop resource that compiles all the facility information and conveys the current status. They said that identifying actions to address the issues and meet future service needs, building consensus around priorities, and creating a feasible plan that can be implemented in phases were the other things they were hoping and expecting out of this effort. We'd love to get council perspective on your facilities' issues, concerns, or goals that are your priorities, or what you think would be big wins. And Mayor Jacobson, we can pause now and have response, or we can wait to the end of the presentation, whatever you'd prefer.
My thought, and council, let me know if you don't agree, but this is something we're just seeing, I don't know if we're going to have any questions right now. I think personally, and if council concurs, I'd rather get the information than if we have the ability to reach out to you after the fact, after we have time to think about it.
Sounds great. And we'll pause at the end of the presentation as well, if any questions come up, or if you start thinking about these issues and want to offer anything at this time.
Thank you.
Here's our schedule. We've made a significant progress interviewing, doing work sessions, bringing your department heads together for visioning, and we've drafted your needs assessment. It is notable that those figures in this presentation are in draft form, we're still refining, so we should have final needs projections in the next couple weeks. So we're wrapping up Phase One, there's two more phases. Over the summer, we'll be developing different alternatives and evaluating them with your staff, and then refining recommendations to hopefully wrap this up before the end of the year. So, some draft needs assessment overview summary information for you. Before I get into the fun stuff, I wanted to make a couple comments about the data that you're seeing. So this phase of work, we're looking at existing conditions, and we're projecting the space needs, the square footage that your departments need to function. We are making that assessment based on interviews, work sessions, and the site tours, as John mentioned, we just completed today. We're looking at industry standards and our professional experience for your space needs, and notably, we are at this point adding 30% growth to estimate future needs to account for expected increased service demands. So that's due to the population growth that's expected in Post Falls by 2040. So given that significant level of growth, we're applying a factor to make sure that when we're thinking about making investments, you'll have enough space to support the work you're going to need to do. As you can see, your building's square footage today is primarily in City Hall and police, but just under half of your square footage is being used by your crews, streets and fleet, parks maintenance, and water wastewater. On the right, you can see that most of your personnel are being supported by your police facility and City Hall, and that per the type of operations that crew facilities are, there are less folks being supported by those facilities. There's some really good news here compared to many of the communities that we have worked with in the past. So Pulse Falls has made some significant investments in your City Hall, your police, your animal shelter, and your cemetery, and those facilities are looking great. They're in good condition, or fair to good condition, they're holding up well for you. You also have some significant investment going on at the water reclamation facility, that's out of our scope, but it is notable as it will take care of those service needs for years to come. So we went through and gave each of your facilities a rating from good to poor, and you can pour over the specifics if you care about individual buildings after this meeting. But in summary, by square footage, you can see that most of your buildings are in good condition, and that's because of your, within the last 20 years, you've invested in City Hall, police, et cetera. However, on the functional front, there are some issues. So we see that many of your facilities, because of the strong growth in your community, because of increased service that is needed and staff increases, there are a number of facilities that could be functioning better for you. Some other takeaways we wanted to mention, there is not sufficient covered storage for your high-value equipment, and that is something that we see as a very cost-effective investment. When that equipment is out in the weather, it needs to be maintained more, it costs more, it takes staff time, and you have to replace it sooner. So those covering that high-value equipment is something that we'd like to include in our recommendations and phase in over time. There's some other points here, but I don't think they're critical at this point, they're more support for alternative space. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Beth to review briefly the needs assessment takeaways for each department.
So for streets and fleet maintenance, they are co-located and adjacent to the water reclamation facility, and then one fleet maintenance staff is located at the police headquarters. As you can see, overall, the condition and function of this facility is not the greatest, definitely fair to poor. A lot of that is due to the fact that it's purpose-built for a car dealership, which is what it used to be. So it's not well-sized and poorly configured, but the main concern is that it does need to relocate, those crews need to relocate within the next 20 years due to the WRF expansion. So the covered structures comparison, this table, as you can see, is going to show up for each department. We are comparing your existing square footages to your current need that is right now, and then of course, your future need. And something to, big thing to note, is that a majority of your facilities, there is a large need currently in your square footages. So for streets and fleet, we noted through our interviews and work sessions with them that they would like to remain co-located. We're going to be looking at possibly locating a new headquarters, maybe in the north of the city. Somewhat centrally located priorities for right now are to improve the crew support space, add bulk material storage, and expand the fleet shop. Water and wastewater, the interesting part about this is that it's, ours is over seven in-scope facilities, and it's spread out over their very large campus. Overall, the condition of their facilities is mostly fair, but the function is the concern for us. So there's not a lot of crew support space and lab, storage, that kind of thing, and their dispersed facilities lead to a lot of inefficiencies. And then of course, as Julie was mentioning, there's a lack of heated and covered fleet Moving into what we're looking into in this next phase, it looks like some wastewater and water functions could co-locate with streets and fleet and move away from the campus. We'll be looking into remodeling some of the facilities on the campus to extend their service life, and possibly considering building some new crew support space. For the parks maintenance headquarters, they are located adjacent to Black Bay Park, and overall, the condition is good to fair, but the function is the thing that is most concerning. One of the biggest issues is the exposed fleet and equipment, and then of course, limited crew support similar to that, to others. And there's a limited capacity to support seasonal growth, as well as the future growth that's going to be coming. Major findings for parks maintenance is that it would be great to enclose their shop and reconfigure a lot of their space, but one of the priorities is to cover that high-value fleet and equipment. And as you are well aware, your City Hall is a beautiful facility, it's got great condition. The function is a little bit challenging, but it is a great centrally-located facility. When talking to your staff, there's, we noted that there's not enough meeting space, and especially the size and configuration of it, as well as the public accessibility to it. And then, you know, there's not, the noise and the rotunda can be a little bit distracting, as well as the facility is not able at the moment to accommodate that growth. So looking into possibly in the future, repurposing some space, consolidating, moving things around, freeing up some more conference space in general, and optimizing how things are used and configured here. Police also has a gorgeous headquarters, we were very impressed today, but the function, of course, is not doing that well. It's, you know, it was built in 2003, and they are at capacity for that facility. They're, so they're overcrowded, they need some storage space, inadequate locker space, and as you can see, the evidence storage is quite packed, and there is a possibility to maybe expand on-site, but there's also a need to have a training facility, possibly in the north. So when talking to police, they mentioned that they would like to remain on-site altogether and leverage those assets currently. So we're looking into reconfiguring that space and prioritizing the workspace, the lockers, and the parking, as they definitely need more space. And moving on to wrapping up.
Okay, thank you, Beth, for the great overview of what we found to date. In conclusion, space deficiencies currently impact all your departments, that's really the main takeaway. However, we see that there's a variety of investments that will help position the city to accommodate the staff that you'll need to serve the growing population, as well as add services. And in addition, those investments will help take care of some of the issues and some of the space configuration problems that we've noted today. In your newer facilities, we think you can improve the layout to help maximize the space use and efficiency. Even in your police and City Hall facilities, there are some areas that are cramped for space, and some areas that are generous and could be used more efficiently. So we're going to take a look at how to balance that. And we see that there is the potential to invest and improve service, reduce maintenance liabilities, and increase efficiency. So here's our next steps. We will be developing and evaluating those alternative concepts that Beth introduced to you tonight. We're working with city leadership to make sure that the alternatives we evaluate and the draft recommendations we come up with are feasible and affordable for the city. And we'll be hopefully scheduling a milestone briefing with yourselves towards the end of our alternatives phase in the July-August timeframe. We'd love to answer questions or hear any feedback.
Is there a chance that you could provide some of those slides that showed your findings?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that could be forwarded on to council?
Absolutely.
And my thought, council, again, if you concur, is we will have that information sent to us, so you can review it, and then direct questions, comments, if that works.
Absolutely, yeah.
May give us time to look at it.
Yeah.
Steve, go ahead.
Just question, so any comments, would we forward them to John then, Beecham, then you would pass them on to the consultants? So John would be our go-between?
Yes.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, our pleasure.
One more question, Al?
I guess the only other thought that I had was that if you identify anything that's like critical or immediate, we just had discussions about budget, I mean, I hate to spend money, but if it's money that's well-spent, I'd like to know about it sooner than later, so we might be able to include it in this year's budget.
Sure.
Absolutely, that's a great comment, and we are working with our project team led by John to make sure that if there is those low-hanging fruit or items that are super important, that are realized through this, that that gets passed on. It is my sense to date that staff has already polled those critical things, that they know need to happen right away, and those are already, many, most, if not all of them, have already been included for your consideration.
Perfect, go ahead.
Just, any of our facilities that the public has access to, did you notice any ADA areas that we might be compliant in, or is there?
That you might be non-compliant in?
Yeah.
So that's a great question. I think that generally, the, your highly-trafficked, more public-facing facilities, we did not notice any ADA-compliant issues. There are a number in your less public-facing facilities.
That will be part of the report, though, that you'll pick out?
Yep.
And highlight those areas for us, though.
Yes, and that's a great comment. I will say, just to manage expectations, this isn't a detailed ADA assessment, right?
Right.
That's a separate issue, but where we notice or hear about any obvious issues, we'll note that in the report.
That was just my thought, if you're going to make recommendations on remodeling or using the space, we want to make sure that we could dovetail those together in our
Buildings ADA Compliance. It's really smart, good suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We have a couple announcements. First of all, voting is open until 8:00 tonight, if you haven't voted, please do. Idaho Senator Jim Risch and the Idaho Department of Commerce launched the Second Annual Support Local Gems Initiative, which serves as an all-day event to support Idaho small businesses. This Friday, May 21st, I encourage you to try a new local restaurant or shop, your favorite local store in Pulse Falls, and support local gems. City Hall and City Business Offices will be closed Monday, May 31st, in observance of Memorial Day. Police, fire, and rescue services for life-threatening or in-progress emergencies may be reached by calling 911. Police Department will be open for walking emergencies. For Water Department emergencies, call 208-773-3517. Memorial Day services will be held at Evergreen Cemetery on Monday, May 31st, with two services, first at 10:00 a.m. and second at 12:00 p.m. The City of Pulse Falls and the American Legion Post 143 will pay tribute to our veterans with prayer, speeches, honor, and color guard. The American Legion Post 143 will post flags on veterans' graves beginning Friday morning, May 28th, and will remain through Memorial Day evening. Should also mention, we do have two public hearings tonight, so if anybody wishes to speak, please fill out the forms on the dials in the back and turn them into shannon. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts, and site visits? Mr. Wolf?
I just wanted to mention, in the effort of being completely transparent, that I did meet with a group of people this last week regarding growth in Post Falls. Stayed away from any comments or discussion on anything that hasn't been approved by the city, but I know there was an article in the paper, I just wanted to clear that I stayed away from all that ex parte stuff, per our attorney, Mr. Wilson.
Anything else? Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes, May 4th, City Council meeting. Item B is payables, April 27th through May 10th, 2021. Item C is frontage improvement waiver request for 502 East 16th Avenue. Item D is acceptance of grant for the Centennial Trail Bridge Maintenance. Item E is acceptance of grants of right-of-way in easement along Horse Haven from Giant Mini Storage. Item F is site development access agreement for Giant Mini Storage. And Item G is received Planning Commission Resolution finding the proposed downtown urban renewal plan consistent with the comprehensive plan. Item H is received the Planning Commission Resolution finding the proposed Pleasant View Urban Renewal Plan consistent with the comprehensive plan. And Item I is land application annexation agreement and the dedication of rights of way in easement.
Any questions on the consent calendar? Intervene a motion?
I move to improve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We're now down to public hearings, and the first one tonight is the Greens Ferry-Glen Annexation. With that, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and council members. Ethan Porter here, with one of the planners of the City of Post Falls, here to present the Greens Ferry-Glen Annexation. We have the owner of this proposal and the subject property as Eagle Crest Land LLC, and the applicant on their behalf is Scott MacArthur from MacArthur Engineering. They tonight are requesting that you review the planning and zoning recommendation to approve the nine acres of single-family R1 zoning designation for the subject property that is hatched in red here on the screen. You can see north of that hatched red mark, the subject property is 16th Avenue, running east and west, then you have Greens Ferry Road running north and south on the west side of the subject property, and is located on the southwest corner of 16th and Greens Ferry Kind of looking at the parcel as it stands currently, it's a large lot residential home within Cootney County. There are no significant topography or vegetation issues that present negative impacts on-site, and the water provider is Ross Point Water District, and the City of Post Falls will be the super provider as well. So here, we can see the zoning map, northwest and south is all surrounded by Cootney County jurisdiction, and to the east across Greens Ferry Road is R1 residential zoning. So that kind of gives you an overview of kind of where we sit with zoning. And then going into the zoning for the annexation, we look at the review criteria. We want it to be consistent with the future land use map, which I will discuss in the upcoming slides after this one. And then- slides after this one. And then we also want it to be consistent with the goals and policies found with the conference plan. As being R1 zoning, it would be used as residential single-family homes, so that would, I know housing has been the topic of discussion of late, so this would be consistent with providing future housing needs as well as securing that use for this area. Looking at the zoning, being assigned following considerations through items such as street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic natural features. Within the staff report, most of those were hit, and there's no negative impacts presented on this. We have 16th Avenue as a major collector and Greens Ferry Road a minor arterial, which does support and can handle an R1 zoning designation at this location. Here we look at the future land use map. It is shown here in the darker, well, lighter orange, I guess, as being medium density. So this is future land use designated as medium density. The surrounding outside of that, the yellow, is going to be low-density residential. Currently, they are proposing low-density residential within this location, so it's a less intense use and not a higher-intense use on the site. Looking at kind of the goals and policies, policy eight encourages compatible infill development and redevelopment of vacant and underutilized properties. So this location is within a county island and is supported by the conference plan to annex in these islands and kind of enclose them up so we can create one whole city. And so with that being, it would be encouraged that this would support that conference plan in that regards. And policy 15 looks at ensuring that adequate land is available for future housing needs, helping serve residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities through provisions of diverse housing types and price levels. Like I said before, this would secure housing use on that site as well as provide future housing needs and current housing needs for the city of Post Falls. Here we can see, just a little hard to see, but this is the Parks Land, Park City Map buffer as well as target areas. And your project location that we're looking at here is that red square there. It is currently within the Parks Mile buffer, being served by the existing and current parks in the city. Further in the review criteria, we look at four and six being not applicable, as this is not a commercial or high-density residential zoning request, nor is it an industrial zoning request. So we would look at number five as being lower-density residential zoning, which is typically assigned for properties as they proceed farther away from the higher intensity of urban activity, which this is. You would have to go south or east to Highway 41 or Mullen to kind of get more of that urban activity and higher-intense uses. So looking at that, agencies were routed or up on the screen. And then of these agencies, we received back from Department of Environmental Quality, they just provided general comments with, providing, general comments for the time of construction that they had. So I would entertain any questions you have for city staff at this point?
Questions, please, at this point.
Yes. So I see that we're annexing in Greens Ferry then, south of the property. Is that to do the improvements, to do road improvements in?
That's for the sewer connection as well, and I believe, Bill, is that for just the dedication of right-of-way?
Right. So you'll be able to run the utilities up through there and prove it?
Correct.
Thank you. Does the African wish to present?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Scott MacArthur, MacArthur Engineering. Can everybody hear me okay?
You can, Scott.
Hi. Again, MacArthur Engineering, P.O. Box 2488, Post Falls, Idaho, 83877. Thank you to staff for making this available by Zoom tonight. I apologize, can't be there in person. As Ethan has presented, he's done a great job with this staff report. It's approximately 10 acres of infill property designated as medium-density by the comp plan. We are looking for a low-impact density, residential density. We provided the subdivision plan, which was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 13th, kind of depicting, or I guess more or less depicting 28 lots within this. We're working with Ross Point Water to improve their infrastructure, and we've also worked with city staff to improve the wastewater plans to extend to this property, to serve it. So I know we're not here tonight to talk about the subdivision, but I just wanted to make sure that was pointed out as that is a hot topic these days. Again, Ethan did a great job with the staff report, so I just wanted to make sure I tossed in the knowledge I have on the property, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, Mr. MacArthur?
No. Mr. MacArthur, do you know if the property owner owns any other undeveloped property within the city right now?
Not to my knowledge. I do not know that.
Okay. And do you know how soon that this development would start?
As soon as possible.
That's it?
Good, thanks.
Any questions? Thank you. People need to testify. Okay, what? Okay. Okay. Wishing to speak, neutral. I'm going to get it right this time, I think. Mike Pelissero. Did I finally get it right?
Arrow, not arrow.
Arrow. Next time I'm going to ask you before you come up.
That's all right. Thank you, members. Just a quick thing. I know development's going to happen. I just would like to point out, I, we, my wife and I, take my son to school every morning up Greens Ferry, make a right down 16th, come back home in the afternoon to pick him up, same way through to there. Right now, that is a busy intersection as it is, so I don't know if there's other ramifications, or if they could put to maybe make sure that that, maybe they could expand that street better or something, because that is a really busy intersection. You've got the schools up just north of that intersection. So you got school buses going through there, kids coming and going, everything else. So it's just, that's a consideration to please take into mind. And the other thing I would just ask is that the wording on it, they have asked for, have come and presented for an R1, asking for an R1, and that we don't have a bait-and-switch thing later where that they come back in and say, oh, we've realized we want to try and find a way to put 50, or 60, or 70, or 80 homes in there. So we would just ask that this is what's presented to the public is the R1, and that's what it'd be held to.
And if we do, if this is approved, it would be approved for annexation with R1 zoning, is that correct? And if they needed to make any change, they've got to come back before and sell their case on that one. So I don't think we can put limitations prohibiting them from coming back in the future, can we?
No, you're always free to come back and ask, but that requires you going back through a hearing process.
But we, but we can't control that. So if it is approved, it will be R1. So what I like, I'll make my comments afterwards, but...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And in opposition, it was mailed in. And this is one that the entire council has not received? Okay. Named Julie Hensley. She's opposed. They ask, is the requested zoning district compatible with street classifications, traffic patterns, et cetera? As a community, we need to evaluate what land has already been designated, what can be built on that land, what impact that will have in our community. Residents are concerned about Post Falls' infrastructure. Research needs to be done on how much a home actually costs a city and have proper fees obtained for those costs. If we don't do that now, we're going to either burden the community with overwhelming tax increases or not have schools and proper medical services for our residents. We currently don't collect impact fees for our fire department because it is a county service, yet they provide those services to our citizens, and we have the capability to collect those fees. Instead, the fire department is asking for a $14.9 million bond that is a result of the population growth of over 118%. Population for the comprehensive plan is projecting that the community is going to grow from 39,000 to 105,000 in the next 20 years. Who's going to assist in making sure that we have the proper resource for this growth? According to Cootney County Fire Rescue Firefighters IAFF-L2856, they quote, "Believe strongly that growth should pay for growth," end quote. They go on to state that, quote, "Per Idaho State law, that we rely on Cootney County and the cities of Post Falls and Dalton Gardens to collect impact fees for our district. We attempted to have these entities collect impact fees in the past, were unsuccessful," end quote. Why are we not making sure that growth is paying for growth and instead putting the burden on our current residents? We also need to challenge, to change legislation to allow to collect impact fees for school. The city has already allocated land for around 23,000 homes that are still to be built. Leg is going to catch up, and where are these kids going to go to school? It is great that we already have some land allocated for schools, but in order to get the schools built, we will need to pass multiple bonds by a 66 and 2/3 vote. The residents are already saying no to levies and bonds. We couldn't even get a school levy passed by 50%, causing us to vote on the same school levy today. We are not making sure that future development is supporting the necessary infrastructures needed to support the population growth. Yes, we realize we are growing, but we need to be smart protecting our community by ensuring that schools, police, fire, EMS, and a proper medical service are in place to care for our residents before annexing further land. Number two, commercial and high-density residential zoning. Let me see, it's not requested. Number three... And I believe that was it. Can I address those comments during deliberation? Should I do it now?
Right now, we're taking testimony, so I'd hold off on your comments.
Thank you. Mr. MacArthur, do you care to rebut? What else?
I do. Am I free to speak, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I do, and I agree with, I can never say Mike's last name correctly either, so I apologize.
Pelissero.
Thank you. This is an R1 zone, and we did present the subdivision with the annexation request to P&amp;Z. I believe he was there in attendance that evening as well. I, too, drive my children down 16th and Greens Ferry to school, and I do recognize the same problems he does with that intersection. With developments come right-of-way dedications, and those right-of-way dedications are financially a sound way for the city to acquire the rights of way. They need to make the improvements for those roads. Along with development also comes the improvements for adjacent rights-of-way in certain situations. I do believe the city has a roundabout plan for that intersection in the near future, but not at this time. But we are making the proper dedications through the annexation process that will give the city that right-of-way to make those improvements. And as far as the infrastructure in place, this project proposes to extend much-needed city infrastructure that has otherwise deterred this property from becoming developed over the years, as far as sanitary sewer and your irrigation, excuse me, domestic irrigation needs for Ross Point Water. So I think that this is a sound infill development that serves the needs of the city, and it's consistent with the goals and policies.
Thank you, Mr. MacArthur. Any questions for Scott at this point? With that, I will close the public hearing. I just want to address a couple of comments first, counsel. Ms. Hensley's comments. I had lunch yesterday with Cootney County Fire and Rescue Chief Chris Way. We talked about impact fees. And I don't remember it, and maybe city does, but apparently in 2008, 2009, somewhere back then, they did approach the city at one point about collecting impact fees. I don't recall it, and I've been around for a long time. Not saying they didn't, but I just don't recall it. But we continue to hear that it's up to us as a city to collect impact fees for fire departments. Chief Way said that there will be a letter coming forward, and we will address that issue. But it is not up to the city to enact those impact fees. It is up, and Mr. Malloy addressed it at the meeting a couple of weeks ago. It's up to that taxing entity, taxing district, to request those. And I've made the comment previously, if that comes forward, I will be supportive of the city participating in the collection of impact fees for fire. But again, if people are making comments, and this comment, although maybe well-intentioned, sounds as though that the Cootney County Fire and Rescue's request is falling on deaf ears at the city, and that's simply not the case. It may have been presented one time before, but bring it back, and let's see what we can do for you. Number two...
Can I please clarify that? So they invited city council members and city staff to attend a presentation on impact fees at the fire district on Seltice Avenue. We did attend, and they never pursued or did anything further with it.
That was back then?
Yes.
Okay.
And so they never made a request to the city. No presentation was made at council meeting. It was just an invitation, open house, that folks were invited to with their consultant, and they did not pursue it any further. No commentary was brought from the city to them or anything else.
And it also predates the current fire chief and the previous fire chief.
Yes.
So I mean, it was a long time ago.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't that long ago, because I went to that meeting.
Well, according to Chris Way, it was when Chief Samper was chief.
It was mayor, but, yeah.
Okay, he thought it was Ron Samper. But in any event, bring it back. We will definitely entertain it personally, and I won't speak for council. I support it. Number two, we need to change legislation to allow the state, allow us to collect impact fees for school. Personally, I'd support that, too. But it's up to the school district and everybody else to reach out to state legislators. That's not under our purview. That's not something we can control. So we appreciate the concern for the continued or increasing need for schools, but we can't collect it if it's not legal. And I hope people will understand that, because that's something that continues to come back. Bring it forward, get it to the legislators, see if we can get some legislation on it. And again, personally, I'd support it. But that's not something that we can control at this point. So the other comment I would make is, on this particular annexation, it's infill, basically, which is nice. It's not a further extension of the city boundaries to the north. I really like the fact that it's going from a median density to R1, and as Mr. MacArthur said, that's not really part of this, but they've already submitted a subdivision plan. And at nine acres, even at five homes per acre, which is typically the max, that'd be 45 homes, we're looking at, he's mentioned possibly 28 lots. It sounds silly, but I get almost giddy on an annexation request where they're going from a higher density to a low density, because we've seen it go the other way so often. So to me, this would make sense. But counsel, I'll open up for your comments. Al?
I'll just piggyback on that. Whenever an annexation request comes before the council, the first thing I ask myself is, is this request, this annexation, going to make the city better? In this particular case, as I read through it and looked at it, there were so many things that make this better. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, they're going to help us extend our sewer out into that pocket. I've always hated these county pockets in the middle of the city, so any type of time we can get annexation for infill, a county pocket, I'm for it. You know, there's people out there that talk about responsible growth. This is it. This is it. This is a small acres, low-impact, low-density. There's already houses around it, and the infrastructure and the transportation is already there, so I would definitely be in support of this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Steve?
When I looked at this, it meets our council goals. We set up for more R1 housing, more infill projects, and I'm excited about Greens Ferry, because it's kind of hit and miss when you go down. And I think just the improvements to Greens Ferry Avenue by getting the right-of-way and being able to improve that intersection, and for the developer running the infrastructure down there, this makes sense to me.
Anybody else?
I would move to approve Greens Ferry's Glen Annexation, file number ANNX-0001-2021, and SUBD-0005-2021 with an R1 designation.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next public hearing tonight is the Lassen Annexation. With that, I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening again, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, council members. Ethan Porter, again, to present the next annexation, which is the Lasson Annexation. The owner of this subject property is Ms. Lasson, and the applicant is Dobler Engineering. They are requesting that the city council review the recommendation for planning and zoning and to approve this annexation request of five acres to get a zoning designation of R1, single-family. So here you can see the subject property here, hatched in red. It's north of Prairie Avenue, directly across the street from Tranquil Meadows subdivision. The Chase and Prairie Roundabout is to the east there, so this is where that location is. Looking at the parcel, currently, it's a large lot residential home within Cootney County, owned by Ms. owned by Ms. Lasson, and the physical characteristics of this site, um, there's none presenting a negative impact. I will mention, and there's a slide up, um, later in my presentation, that does present somewhat of a slope from the shoulder of the road down to the property itself, but does not present any issues that staff has seen or, um, project to see for that. So the water provider for this area is East Green Acres Irrigation District, and City Post Falls would be the sewer provider. Here you can see the zoning, uh, the Tranquil Meadows to the south there, um, south of the subject site across Prairie Avenue is R1 zoning, and you have Quiet Ridge to the east on Prairie, close to that intersection of Chase and Prairie, that's also R1, and then all the other, um, lighter colors you see is R1S, uh, making up the Arrow Leaf, um, subdivision, as well as Craftsman at Meadows Ridge. Here we can see that the Park Small Buffer, um, I kind of made it transparent on the back and then kind of zoomed in more closely so you can see it a little bit better, but that blue rectangle there is a project location, and it's showing that it's within the Park Small Buffer. Uh, the green to the northwest of that project location, though, does show that it's a target area for a future park, so that will potentially be looked at by the Parks Department. Any impact fees, um, received for, uh, parks will be probably looking at that site to acquire property for the future park. Um, this kind of gives an overview, um, this slide of kind of what's surrounding it, and you have Arrow Leaf Estates in the purple at 2.96 units per acre, you have Tranquil Meadows, like I mentioned, south of the subject property at 2.5 units per acre, Craftsman at Meadow Ridge is 1.98 units per acre, and then you have Quiet Ridge to the east in the yellow or orange, um, the 2.62 units per acre. So this kind of gives you just an understanding of what's in the city and kind of what the density is around this area. Um, here's the site, um, what, like I mentioned, right there on the shoulder, kind of dips down to the property, um, not a significant issue at all, it doesn't provide any negative impacts on the site. As it gets developed, it'll probably be, you know, regraded and potentially, um, examined further. And then looking at the zone change review criteria for this, we want to be consistent with the future land use map, uh, which I'll show in the upcoming slide, and as well as the consistent, consistency with the goals and policies found with the conference of plan. Um, it is providing housing, which is needed, um, and it is, um, R1, so, um, this area, um, which I will discuss in the upcoming slides, is in a transitional zone, uh, for a future land use designation, so I'll kind of explain a little bit more what's going on with that. Um, but then we have number three there is looking at the consideration items, uh, street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features, which some of those are already hit on, but Prairie Avenue being, um, um, primary road can actually handle an R1 subdivision there, an R1 zoning. So looking a little more at that designation for future land use, uh, future land use designation is transitional, you can see it here as it is in the blue. Um, the yellow is the low-density residential, and then that circle in the dashed red is going to be, uh, what's projected as a commercial node. So that's at the intersection of the roundabout of Chase and Prairie. Kind of looking more at the transitional, um, purpose for this land use designation, uh, sorry, it's a little hard to read on that focus area down below, but I'll, I'll read it out to you guys, but, uh, this designation for transitional land use designation within the conference plan, it's basically assigns land suitable for growth. It doesn't quite know the timing, it's undetermined, but it does guide, uh, the focus area for this area does guide that growth and kind of what that, um, future land use will be. And so looking a little bit more at that focus area, it's, falls within the central Prairie, central Prairie focus area, and highlighted here, I have that it, this is straight from the conference plan, it says, "A future growth should embrace variety of housing types, land uses, maintain quality standards, and provide even greater emphasis on pedestrian friendliness and connecting neighborhoods to community trails and nearby amenities." It also down below in the other highlighted sections shows that it supports provisions for variety of housing types and densities. Looking at the next for zone change, uh, review criteria, again, we're not looking at commercial or high-density residential, and we're not looking at industrial, so four and six essentially are not applicable to this, but we are looking at the lower-density residential, of course, is on the periphery of the city limits up on Prairie, so it is, um, not near any, uh, high-intense urban activity in this area, um, so it does meet that review criteria. The agencies routed were, um, here, and then of these agencies, what we received back was Post Falls Highway District, who remains neutral, but they do, um, want to look at the alignment and spacing of Prairie Avenue, if right-of-way on Prairie Avenue does not occur. And then Department of Environmental Quality, again, they provide a general comment at the time of construction. And so for city staff, I would entertain any questions you have for-
Ethan, you made a comment that the road can handle, can handle the traffic, residential.
Correct, just for R1 zoning, correct.
Can it at this point? With the number of, uh, the amount of development and, and that's taken place up there, it's busier and busier all the time, can it really handle it without having first been approved, or is it the improvement that will come with it?
And that, oh, sorry, and that, um, I'll probably punt to Bill if he wants to kind of comment more on that, um, transportation aspect on this. I know Prairie Avenue is projected to be expanded and so on and so forth in the future, but the specifics I don't have on that, so I would let him comment.
Can I, Ethan?
Yeah.
Do you think that you could get us, um, sometime soon, a new map? Uh, or, uh, is that like a Google Earth? That's not really what it looks like right there, right? Because, um, let's see, oh, okay, maybe it is. Okay, now I see Hydrilla. Okay, sorry about that, I, I didn't see that street below.
No, you're good.
Okay.
Yeah, forgive me if those texts are small, so maybe I can zoom in a little bit.
Okay, okay, yeah, I see it, I see it looking this way, I'm just blind, I'm old. Okay, I see. Thanks.
And I think, Bill, what we'll do is, unless someone else got a question right now, we can wait and hear from the applicant, and then hear a testimony, then we can have you address that.
So, quick question. So the existing development to the south, uh, there, there is no access to Prairie Avenue from any of that development to the south, correct?
Uh, I believe there is, yeah. There's, um, a road that goes out to Prairie from Tranquil Meadows, and then it tees off on the south end, going east and west.
I don't think so. I don't see it there either.
No, that's not current enough.
I see what you're saying, then, if that's what you're getting at?
Yeah.
Yes, so the new parcel layer is not actually, it is on, but it wasn't part of this, so yes, it does show a subdivision layout on that new parcel layer, which does show an upside-down T on Tranquil Meadows south of that, so it should go down and then T east and west.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Any questions? The president wish to speak? Come forward, name for the record, and we've got a timer on you here. I don't know, Ethan, uh, I'm past your view right there.
All right, Gordon Dobler, Dobler Engineering. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Complant designation for the property, again, it's five acres, uh, you've seen where it is, complant designation, I think Ethan went through that, I don't think we need to do a whole lot more, it is in the, uh, Central Prairie and in the transitional, and the transitional actually, um, allows for higher density, especially along arterials, so the R1 would be on the lower end of the scale of what the transitional would be encouraging. There's current zoning, you've seen that, project is, uh, yeah, you've seen, again, it don't show up, but there it is, and there's your R1 for Tranquil and R1 for Quiet. And those were both subdivisions that I had done, too. Uh, schools, um, actually, interesting statistic that I dug up is that the Urban Land Institute study shows the typical single-family development or single-family dwelling will generate .6 children. I don't know what that looks like, but that's the statistic, uh, per household. Um, I will just give you a little sneak preview, we have submitted a preliminary plat to the Planning Commission, it'll be heard next month, and we are planning on doing 16 lots in this five acres. There is a single-family residence that would be, uh, maintained, so, which would be 15 new homes, which would give you nine new students on the schools, and this gives you, as you well know, uh, the locations of the schools and the location of the facility. So clearly that, uh, these are children that'll be driven if they're, um, not of driving age. Here's utilities, utilities are there and they're adequate, um, the will serves, uh, we have from Post Falls for sewer and from East Green Acres for water. Again, our subdivision is right here, water and sewer were extended through, this is the Tranquil Meadows subdivision, we came in and hooked into Hydrilla for sewer, so it brings it up here. This project would extend it up to its, uh, northerly limits, too. Transportation, good questions. So at Abut's, as you know, at Abut's Prairie, Prairie is scheduled to be a five-lane, two lanes either direction and a left-turn lane. With annexation, as you know, we give, uh, right-of-way, which is part of the development paying its own way, so that's dedicated, and in addition with development, we either construct or provide fees in lieu of for construction of the abutting roadways, which that's what we did with Tranquil and Quiet, and that's what would happen with this subdivision, too. Uh, again, 15 new homes would generate 11 trips in the peak hour, or about one trip every five minutes on Prairie. So I'm sure Bill will have comments, but that gives you the scope of what we're talking about, one new car every five minutes on Prairie. Parks, uh, Ethan did a good job of showing where future parks will be, these are your existing parks, you have Immaculate, Concepcion Chapel Field, Crown Point, some of these are private, but they're still accessible, as we all know. That gives you an overview, and then park impact fees are paid, uh, that contribute to purchasing new park land. So you've got five parks that are within three-quarter mile radius of this project. Land use, I won't belabor a whole lot of this, because I think staff encapsulated it pretty well for you, but, uh, land use, again, the R1 is in the lower scale of what the transitional, um, designation anticipates. Post Falls, you know, annexing into Post Falls ensures that you're going to have safe neighborhoods that are compatible with around the surrounding neighborhoods, the zoning would ensure that, too. Uh, by the way, let me throw another number at you, the density, Ethan gave you some of the densities, we're in the 2.5, 2.8 range for the Tranquil, this, this density would be 3.2. Lot, lot, lot sizes are a little bit bigger. Again, I know that subdivision stuff, but I also know it's nice for the, to know when you're looking at whether to annex or not. I, I don't know, it's got a mind of its own. There we go. Housing, we've talked about that, this provides with the R1 provides for, um, affordable housing and developments that are, uh, maintain the character of the neighborhood. Transportation, we've already talked about that. This project will pay its fair share for improving the transportation network without adding a burden to the existing streets. Services, facilities, they're there and they're adequate, we've shown you that. Recreation and open space, uh, you've seen the plan, proximity to the, uh, existing parks, future park planned in the area, and contribution to, and, uh, impact fees for, uh, future park purchases. No natural resources or hazards, economic development is always, you know, additional subdivisions bring with them an increased tax base for the city. And I know they increase services, too, but they, they provide, um, a tax base to offset that. There you go.
Any questions, Mr. Dobler? Oh?
Mr. Dobler, do you know if the owner owns any other property within the city that's currently undeveloped?
I, I don't know if he does or not.
Um, and you said that there is a development plan that's pending?
Yes, we submitted a subdivision preliminary plat to the Planning Commission, and I have a hearing date of June 13th.
Um, my understanding is you said that it was going to be 16 lots, but it could be a max of 25 lots, correct? Five units per acre?
Well, the R1 zone would allow density up to that. That's kind of an indirect way of answering a question, we don't plan to develop to that density, we've submitted something, and if it, uh, that's far less than that.
Right, I, I'm, and I'm not questioning what you're planning to do, but the owner could sell it tomorrow, and the Knicks guy could come in and say, "No, you know what, I'm going to max it out and put 25 houses in there."
Yeah, and then we'd have to go back through the Planning Commission approval to, to make that happen.
Yeah. So if your plan gets approved, how soon would that project be launched?
We would be building it this summer.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve Whit?
Just a question on the, the Prairie Avenue, that funds would either be improvements for Prairie or go into a fund, but would you still have to construct sidewalks along that portion, or would that be done when the street does it improve?
Well, that's a great question. Uh, staff has been requiring at least multi-use paths.
Okay.
So, and that's what happened with Quiet and Tranquil, we construct the multi-use path, and that's what we would do on this one. We've already, uh, had the pre-op and pretty much expect that condition.
Okay, so there would be, uh, at least some pedestrian walkway?
There would be.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
And I don't imagine a rebuttal will be in order then. With that, I'll close the public hearing.
Did you want, uh, Bill to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Uh, can we do it during deliberation, though, so I don't have to reopen the public-
We could reopen it, but you haven't done anything, so just say it's reopened and Bill can come up.
No, I, I get to do this. It's reopened. It's a, it's a power thing with a hammer. Thanks, Warren, appreciate it.
Uh, Mayor, City Council, um, I'll stand right here and stay in place so I won't hear from media at the-
We'll call you on it.
End, end of my presentation this evening, because I tend to move around a little bit. Prairie Avenue is classified as a, a minor arterial, it's part of the critical access corridor that, um, KMPO has established, which means where we limit access along that corridor. So primarily focusing access locations at, um, would be the major north-south that we have Chase, McGuire in there, with some limited access in between that you have, you won't see individual homes accessing along that corridor, nor will you see, you know, uh, more multiple access points from roadways along there, that keeps traffic moving through there. We've recently, um, the city of Post Falls and the Post Falls Highway District have been focusing on the intersection improvements of those major, you know, McGuire, Chase, Pleasantville, all those more major intersections through there, to keep traffic, traffic flowing through there and the focus on safety, so that's been our real focus along there. So focusing on the intersections and limiting access really allows, um, traffic to project through. Um, long-range, the plan is to have that be a five-lane facility. We've spoken with the Post Falls Highway District, there isn't sufficient right-of-way currently, um, to widen that road to its ultimate section, so we kind of have a little bit of a chicken-and-egg scenario, as we have developed throughout the rest of the community. The, we annex, development comes along, they widen, or grant us right-of-way and either cash out or develop those financial improvements, and that's how we'll widen, long-term, but by limiting access, we will have, be able to maintain that current capacity for a long time, um, that we have there. So they're part of the overall solution that we have there. So, like I said, the Highway District doesn't have any long-range plans, because they don't have right-of-way to actually do some development with it. Our discussion with them is that, you know, they're probably going to wait for annexations to occur in which we obtain right-of-way, and then at that point, the development can occur.
Any questions?
There was also just a real brief discussion, um, on, um, on the yield within the zoning there, you know, that they, you know, the five units per acre, that's a maximum that you, that you can provide in there, but by the time you develop roadways and get infrastructure in there, it's really tough to get a yield of the max you have, particularly on a small lot, small acreage lot like this, so.
Can I ask you something? Hey, Bill, um, so I'm wondering, coming off that five-acre piece and onto Prairie, how many access roads will come out of that five-acre piece?
There will be one.
One, yeah.
And they will line up with one to the south.
And so it will be like a, um, like a dumbbell type of project, sort of?
Actually, while we're looking at it, one of the goals that the staff has is we take these smaller acreage pieces and the infill pieces is trying to put this jigsaw puzzle together, so at the end it looks like a master-planned, you know, like it was all done as, as one large master-planned project. So we have already talked to the developer and have already had some preliminary layouts about, when that project comes through, it'll extend north and extend east and west, so that as the adjacent properties develop, they will tie into that road that will come out at that same location, so-
Sort of like Black Stallion is doing, where it just kind of dead-ended, there was just a road there forever, and now it's going to be going through.
And, and we do that with a lot of- And, and we do that with a lot of our infill pieces with, with everyone that comes in, and we have a twenty-acre, and we've got all the rest, we say, okay, as we, as we look at them with lot, lot layouts where they're going, we try to ensure the roadways get connected to the adjacent properties so that we can continue it through, so that it, it'll, once it's done, it's, it's, it almost looks more like it was all done as one master plan project. That's our goal, as we look.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
Okay, so you said it is going to, the access road to Prairie does line, will line up with the one that's already on the south side?
Correct.
How far to the nearest crosswalk?
That I couldn't quote you. I, and, and if they don't even build the improvements, you know, we might have them cash out those frontage improvements on the north side because it is a small section through there, so they might not even have, you know, continuity. So, yeah, so there isn't, there isn't an immediate crosswalk to get across to, to the others. If that was, if that was a concern, we could, we could look at having maybe just the, the intersection constructed with the crosswalk that connected to the south, immediately to the south through there, so.
So there's, there's basically going to be no way for a pedestrian to get out of this development to anywhere else on a structured facility?
In, in, unless we, unless we constructed something specifically at that intersection where they would cross and go to the development to the south. So it's, it's part of ultimately getting all of this whole infrastructure system built out, so. That, that is something that we'll look at with, with this development, is, is how can, is there a possibility that we can tie that intersection in with possibly the intersection to the south to see if we can make that work?
And this is a bit beyond the scope, probably, of this discussion, but I'm just trying to, I'm kind of curious, there's nothing, nothing being proposed for either the east or, east or west. The closest crosswalks are probably Chase on one end, and what's the next right over, Maguire on the other?
Howell.
Howell, yeah. So what, what kind of pedestrian facility to get to the south would, would you imagine? Would it be a, a bridge over Prairie, or?
The, the only thing you could do would be to build some kind of a pedestrian facility right there at where it ties up at Prairie, and so it would be a mid-block crosswalk. You're not going to have access east and west, yeah. So it'd be a mid-block crosswalk, trying to try those, those intersections in together, so.
Okay, that's all I got.
It's, like I say, it's part of this chicken and egg, getting, getting annexation and growth to occur, so then ultimately we can get those safe connections all the way through, so.
Here comes Bob.
Thank you.
Bob, do you have something to say?
Captain, mine. Bob Seale, Community Development Director. Just kind of following up on that, I mean, like with every development that does come through, ultimately, we are looking at the master plan for the entire city. You know, we look at the comprehensive plan, we look at the transportation plan, wastewater, water. And as things incrementally come in, that's as, that's when they get developed. Or, again, as Bill noted, cash out and those public improvements get installed as the right-of-way becomes available to us. You know, ideally, sure, have a hundred acres come in at the same time. That's not the way that it's going to develop out, specifically looking at Prairie. We're going to look at five-acre increments along the way. And as Bill noted, the right-of-way along Prairie is hit or miss as to whether or not the Post Falls Highway District has, you know, enough right-of-way. So that'll be kind of one of those incremental pieces as well, that as things go along, they will come together and build basically that jigsaw puzzle where you get the good interconnections between the various developments, whether it's single-family or multifamily, or however it ends up ultimately fleshing out in the end. But that's up to the master plan and up to you guys, so.
Now, since you came up here, Bob, I'll ask you, how many acres of residential land is available in Post Falls right now that's not developed? Is it about thirteen-hundred?
I think that number that was in that, this is something we want to go over, but I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. There is around thirteen-hundred residential acres, I think that's what it was. Some of it's platted, some of it's not. Some of it's been within the city for thirty years. Some of it, you know, they will develop as the market demands and as they're able to do it. Again, a couple of those, a couple of, a lot of that acreage is held by one or two developers, and they can only develop at a certain rate as well. And I am, again, digging into the numbers and looking at the annexations that we have done over the past five years, six years, seven years, and what that looks like and how they have developed out, and how many parcels we do have available within the city that's platted at this current time, and the rate that that is being developed at. You know, quick numbers on, you know, that I saw today, you know, we probably have around four-hundred single-family lots that have been platted. That's less than at least one year's worth of growth for single-family. So, you know, when you're looking at moving forward and how we grow, we want to have, in order to have a stable market, more like three times that many, but we're not there yet because we can't keep up with it.
And I think that's kind of what you said.
Are you done?
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah. And so basically what you're saying, even though we have that much acreage, it's not all R1, it's a different zone.
It's residential.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, I will now close the public hearing. And thanks, Bill, thanks, Bob. Counsel.
Could we look at that, could somebody bring up that map, Ethan, and show us how far this parcel is from Crown Point? Because it looked like it was pretty close.
I was wondering the same thing. It's about a mile. It's about halfway between Chase and Maguire.
Well.
Crown Point's, the entrance to Crown Point's about a half mile beyond that.
I guess I can show you this. You can kind of see here, I don't know if you want to go to the other one or not. Yeah, the other one shows it better.
Was it, was it one that Mr. Dobler was showing?
Yeah.
It's Crown Point, then, is it? Yeah, yeah, maybe.
Crown Point's just off the right of the screen there.
Yeah.
Ethan, it's in your slideshow.
Yeah.
It was better shown on the slide that Mr. Dobler had.
Yeah, yeah. It didn't look like it was that far away, but...
Well, from the entrance to Crown Point is about a half a mile from Chase, and this property is about a half mile to the other side of Chase, so it's right around a mile. I drive that road every day, almost every day.
So do I.
Yeah. So.
Any other questions?
I have comments.
Wait up.
So I guess I'm back to whenever I consider an annexation, I'm looking at, is this what's good for the city? This one was a bit of a challenge because, number one, you can see it's extending out beyond our current city limits. As Joe pointed out, there's no access for anybody that lives in that, that would live in that subdivision to cross Prairie without mad dash across the road to get into the next subdivision and make your way down. And then I'm just not of a mind that Prairie is quite ready for more development along there. So when I stop and look at it from the standpoint of, does this make our city better? The only real selling point is it adds sixteen more lots. But that's why I asked Bob the question. You know, we have quite a few available lots and a lot of undeveloped acreage already approved within the city, so I'm going to fall on the other side of the fence, and I'm not in favor of annexing this property.
Now, let me ask you a quick question, just on, on clarification, identification. You asked twice tonight if the owners owned other property. What's, is there a basis for that? Just curious.
There is. I guess what, what went back, it went back to when Steve asked a while back on an annexation about, you know, are we setting ourselves up to fail because we're not allowing these annexations for, to, to attract new people to the area? Thing that really bummed me out about that, the answer that night was, that particular developer has other acreage that they're not developing. So that's why I'm asking the question. If these people already have acreage within the city and they're just sitting on it for future investment or whatever, then no, I'm not too anxious to give them more. I want to encourage them to develop the land they have. So if anything, I'm kind of just, I've got my list of questions now, and I'm going to ask every time there's an annexation.
I was just curious, I, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, that's why.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Sounds good. Who else wants to comment? Joe?
I agree, this one is also kind of a head-bender. The, you know, the R1 designation is nice, just because the, part of maintaining a small-town type of feel, the fastest way to kill that is through increased density. So this would be a way to get something on the Prairie by a, a major street that is lower density. That said, I just, I try to envision how it's going to be functional, being that it's kind of by itself on an island, completely separated from anything else around it. So if you have a car, great. There's no sidewalk on the north side. I don't, I think there might be a multi-use path on the south side, but again, there's, there's no developed way to get across the street on a bike or, or on foot. There's no way to get east or west on the north side of the street. One thing, it's probably more in Bill's pay grade than mine is, is, and it's going to go to the Idaho Transportation Department and everything else, is how many, how many pinholes do we want to poke on Prairie right now? Now, when we know it's going to be expanding more and more as a major east-west thoroughfare. So this is a situation where I debate whether a five, developing at five acres at a time, probably with, so say the, the five acres to the east and the five acres to the west come in, there's no way to tie into the road system to this one because they'd have to tear down some houses to go east and west, so you could just keep poking pins into, into Prairie.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah.
I'm getting two negatives, and I think that's what Bill addressed, is they would develop this similar to a master plan where those roads east and west would tie into each other.
Yeah, so there's going to be...
Only if the land on either side of the red one developed.
I said, this is the correct pinhole. That's where it's supposed to line up.
So I didn't mean to interrupt you, Joe, but I'm shaking.
So, and I, I do appreciate this pinhole is across the street from another one, directly, but I'm trying to think of, I'm assuming there's going to be one north-south road in this, in this development. There's probably going to be no east-west. So if the five-acre parcels on either side come in, there's no way to connect. So that's...
That's how it works.
They're east-west as well.
To connect to those other...
In, within this five-acre?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd have a hammerhead kind of at the end of each one.
Coming in on the other side, they would tie those ones together.
So the record's closed, we're deliberating, and so the, the comments probably just do deliberations.
Okay. So I guess that, if it's missable or not, makes me feel a little better, but it's just odd for me being right out in the middle of nowhere with nothing else around it.
Anybody else?
I don't think that, I'll say something. I don't think that it's really out in the middle of nowhere. I, I do have a problem with, again, the pedestrians. I think we've talked about this a couple of other times out there on Prairie, maybe a little bit further to the east, about kids trying to come across the road. I, I do have a problem with that and having no crossing. I don't have a problem with the, the road structure because I do understand what staff is saying about they are just going to dead-end the roads, and it'll dead-end until the people on the east and west and on the north eventually develop. So I think most of those parcels out there are going to be in the future like this, where there is a five-acre piece and there's a ten-acre piece, and there's probably a couple fifteens out there because I know some people who have them. So I think that's probably how this is going to develop north of Prairie for the most part. So I'm really, I'm really on the fence, and I, I'm not against it. I, I think it's a safety situation for pedestrians crossing the road, so.
Steve?
And that's why I kind of asked the question, at least you'll have a sidewalk on that side there, and as these other parcels come in, as Linda said, they'll be developing sidewalks. So eventually, you'll probably have something there, but I don't see this coming in as one big piece, that it will be five-acre lots, and I think we have quite a few developments around town like that. I lived in one myself that started out as five acres with two hammerheads, and the next five acres came in and expanded it. So I don't know if we really have a crosswalk at Crown Point to get across Prairie, and that's a lot more houses and a lot more people.
But they, but on the other side, they have their own park, so those kids have a place to go to have a park.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough one, but I see where this isn't affecting Highway 41. It's, I think it's far enough away that most of the people will either go down Chase or Maguire to hit the interstate, so they're not going out to 41. If they'll go up to 53, so I don't think we can use that, that 41's not ready yet, that it's going to impact that. And our staff has said that it will handle the car traffic on that, so I would say that I think this is the way this area is going to develop, and I don't think it's way out of town because we've got Crown Point that's out there, and we've got some developments off of Maguire out there. So, so it's not, not out of town to me.
Carrie?
Well, I agree with just about everything that Joe said, just didn't want to repeat it. But it is, yeah, it is a, it's one of those things, it's the timing, if there was more. But I, I'm picturing Prairie and the not-being parks, not-being facilities, and I think Mr. Dobler said nine students, you know, that it would add. That's nine kids that would need a parent to drive them across Prairie to go anywhere. Yeah, I, I don't know how I feel.
Lynn?
My concern is the improvements along Prairie Avenue. Reading the planning and zoning report, looks like that's kind of the last phase of improvement in the Prairie Avenue plan, and we're talking ten to fifteen years down the road. So if they cashed out the improvements today, is that going to pay for the improvements ten years from now? I don't think so. So I have a little concern about that. It's, we're, we're going to be sitting, holding money, and it's not going to be enough to make the improvements when the time comes. So then again, it's out of the sleaze pocket. I'm real concerned about that.
Question. I have no idea, maybe I have a little bit of an idea which way this may go, but if this were to be approved with the designated zoning, could there be a condition, and I don't even know if it's palatable or financially feasible, that a crosswalk, something for the, be put in to address a safety concern? And is that something that can be considered at this point for the annexation?
So the annexation, as you know, we do an annexation agreement along with each annexation that sort of sets the, the ground rules for how the property comes in. We could certainly negotiate and ask and see if we could work that into an agreement in some form or fashion, and those obviously come back to you for approval. So that's, it's certainly something that we could, we could ask and see if we could negotiate.
How would that affect a decision tonight, though? Because it seems like the majority of the concern is the public sa, is the safety, mainly for the kids, and there, there's other issues as well. But is that something that, that sways the council? I don't know.
Well, how do you do that?
That's what I don't know.
How do you, how do, what do you mean, you could ask? I'm not sure.
So like any agreement, you go in with points that you're hoping to negotiate for, and if we can successfully negotiate an agreement that includes a crosswalk, some, whatever that facility looks like, we bring that back to you one way or the other. If you're satisfied with the solution, you approve the agreement, you approve the annexation. If you're not satisfied with the solution, you deny the annexation agreement, and it falls apart at that point.
I'm confused about that because I know that before you were here, we had an issue with Tulamore, and they wanted to change something, I don't remember all the details, but we were, we were going to require them to pay for a stoplight, pay for the, the traffic signal out on 41, and prior council said, yeah, you can't do that.
It's, going to give you the lawyer answer, it depends. It kind of depends on how much you're asking, what you're asking them to do, what's the nexus to the development. There's no hard or fast here. It's, I don't have a sense, sitting here, because this just came up tonight with the order of magnitude that we're talking about, but again, it's, it's something we can certainly talk through and see whether there's a solution there that works or not.
Okay.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
And so do you just table this and, or what do you do?
So normally, when you make a motion to approve the annexation, essentially, that's contingent on the successful negotiation of an annexation agreement. If we can't come to terms on an annexation... If we can't come to terms on an annexation agreement, it just dies.
And so do you, do we put the language in about the crosswalk?
I think that's appropriate, yes.
Okay, well, I'll try to float that.
Okay.
I would move to approve the Lassen annexation file number ANNX-0002-2021 with an R1 zone, provided that there is a crosswalk across Prairie Avenue.
I'll second that.
Does that work for you, Mr. Wilson?
Yep.
Motion second, further discussion.
Joe? Question. Mr. Wilson, when Mr. Seal was talking earlier and was asking about the connectivity to prairie and everything else, and you kind of shook your head, was his comments that he provided me, am I allowed to take that into consideration in this vote or not?
Sure, yeah, I mean, it's, there was testimony earlier on that that was, that the roads would be connected east-west and north, so that's in the record.
Yes, I guess I missed the east-west part and that part of the discussion, so. And as long as we're in discussion again on this too, I'm not, I guess a concern, I appreciate the addition of the crosswalk, but it seems we have a hard enough time getting drivers to pay attention to crosswalks that are at intersections, much less in the middle of a block on prairie, so.
I would amend my motion to include a...
Rapid flashing beacon?
Flasher, yes. Thank you.
I'll second.
Any additional comments? Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Of course you would start with me. Hi.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thank you for a good discussion now. Thanks for your explanation. I just wanted to ask you on that question, so I appreciate it.
No, no problem.
Unfinished business, returning items. We do have an ordinance on the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment.
Move to place the ordinance on the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment on its first and only reading while, by title only, while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, amending the annual appropriation ordinance 1403 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenues and to authorize expenditure of previously unbudgeted fund balance, increasing and establishing the appropriations for expenditures in various departments and funds, providing that the tax levy upon taxable property within the city is not affected hereby, providing that all ordinances in conflict herewith are superseded by this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, and providing that the ordinance shall be effective upon its publication date.
Move to approve the ordinance fiscal year 2021 budget amendment to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Next item up is new business, and I've been with the city as a councilman and a mayor for almost 23 years, and I have never seen a request like this. Mr. Tondy's out in the audience, and I bet you never saw it while you were on the council either. We get to discuss the request to license a raccoon. I've seen plenty of raccoons on my property, and I never thought about a license for them. I thought about a few other things, but apparently they can be a good pet, so.
Ace.
Shannon, it's all yours.
Hello. Shannon Howard, City Clerk. A couple weeks ago, I was contacted by Randy Mayek, and she has requested to r- to license her pet raccoon Ace. Her and her family have moved from, I believe it's Nevada, and...
Omaha, Nebraska.
Omaha, Nevada.
Nebraska?
Nebraska, thank you. It's a little different over on this side of the room than over there. She's had this raccoon for about a year now, and it's become part of their family, and she wants to be a good pet owner, and she has approached the animal control about licensing the pet, and they really only license cats and dogs, and per our city code, it falls under the keeping of wild and exotic animals, and it says that you have to get a express written authorization of the Post Falls City Council for this. So she would like to request that. Ace is fully vaccinated and is under local veterinarian care.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Was the raccoon licensed in Nebraska?
I did not ask her that.
Not all municipalities require it.
Have you met the raccoon? I have not met the raccoon.
It's still a wild animal, you know, by species.
The raccoon has been raised in their household since birth.
By, I mean, just by the species, not, not, what is his name, Ace? This is not, I'm not casting as Persians on Ace.
She does not recommend having a raccoon as a pet, just because they're very rambunctious and...
Oh.
Just curious, I guess that if the raccoon is licensed, it falls under the same laws that apply to a dog, so if it bites somebody or does something like that, we would still deal with it the same way that we would a dog or a cat, correct?
A leash?
I'm curious what Chief has to say about this.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Pat Knight, Chief of Police, and that is the first time I've ever heard that question as well. That is a good question. I would assume there are some things we'd want to do, and I don't know if it's been done yet or not, because I haven't talked to my animal control folks yet, but I would assume that, you know, they want to make sure that the health and safety standards have been applied, and making sure that the raccoon will be taken care of inside the house. If it's outside, that it's caged appropriately, that type of thing. But if it bit somebody, the question's going to be, where are we going to quarantine that for 10 days? Most times that they can adequately do so, they can quarantine the animal still at the house, and we just go check up on it. So I would assume we'd treat it like we would anything else. We'd work with them to make sure we got that, you know, taken care of, but I personally appreciate the fact she's even thinking about following the rules and saying, hey, I should probably go down and make sure I license this animal if it's appropriate. So, anyway, good question, but I think we'd probably follow the same protocols with any other animal, but it falls under exotic animal, meaning council will have to approve it.
Joe? So, I couldn't tell if you said you haven't spoken to your animal control officers about this, or you have?
I have not, so, something I could do, but most times, any times these types of requests come forward, they make sure that they go out and do a site visit, make sure that it's appropriate, that they're even asking or requesting of this.
And did you happen to look at the pictures in the packet?
Actually, I didn't see the pictures.
The pictures, the animals in a, the child is in an animal cage, a kennel, with the raccoon. It shows a gentleman walking his dog and his raccoon, and it shows the raccoon and the dog next to each other, eating out of their respective bowls.
Yeah. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I couldn't tell from the pictures, but it looks like he's been declawed on the front.
And I don't know that, but I'll tell you this, as long as they've been in town, I don't know how long that's been, we have not received any complaints from any of the neighbors saying, hey, they have a raccoon in their housing lot, so.
Carrie?
You know, I'd really like, as amusing as this is, I'd really like animal control to weigh in on that. What are their pros and cons? What if we don't license it? Would they not be allowed to have it now that everybody knows, including their neighbors?
That is correct.
That they have this animal?
I believe, so that one I can answer, yes. Without it being licensed, it can't be in the city limits. It would have to go.
So we gain kudos for doing the right thing.
Yeah.
Counsel, it probably entertains a motion, and it might be entertaining, but...
I'd move that we give Ace a license.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
It's not like it's a bear or a tiger or something.
Well, I'm getting a tiger, so watch out.
I'm going to get a therapy badge, but that's all.
I like the license we came up with. A little picture of Ace.
Our legal department.
Roll call.
They were having a little fun with it.
Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
I don't want to be a curmudgeon, I'm going to let Ace become a resident, so aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Boy, I'm sure glad I didn't have to break that tie. I really would have been put on the spot.
This is reminiscent of the chicken discussion some years ago.
Yeah, they're licensing cats again. No, that, I shouldn't have said that.
Let that one lie.
Yeah. Next item, Post Falls Food Bank request regarding the Senior Center land lease.
I'm not sure I want to go following that presentation, but since I'm next in line, the Senior Center and the Post Falls Food Bank have been discussing merging their operations. The Post Falls Food Bank would take over the Senior Center's responsibilities and operate out of the Senior Center facility. The city owns the property that underlies the facility where the Senior Center sits, and so there'll be remodeling, it needs to happen interior of that facility, so there'll be some capital investment that is needed. And they just wanted to check in with council, if council's willing to either sell the property to them, do a new lease with the City of Post Falls for the land, or some other type of negotiation that would allow them to come in, take over operations for the Senior Center, and continue their food bank operations. They would then sell their property that they have currently down on Third Avenue, and this is just kind of a check-in. They don't want to invest and have their architect spend a bunch of money and submit a site plan if we're not interested at all in negotiating with them. I can tell you from staff's perspective, we don't have a real interest in selling the property, but if that's the recommendation that comes out of this later, we would bring that forward to you.
One of the issues that the food bank has had is a lack of space and need a big enough facility. What I liked about it is they would step in and take over the operation of the Senior Center, continue Meals on Wheels, et cetera.
Yes, and the Senior Center has been struggling, and without this, they would have to do something different, but...
Counsel comments, thoughts?
I think it's a great idea. I think the food bank's well-operated, and I'd like seeing that organization step into the Senior Center, so.
I also agree that as the population continues to grow, the food bank's role in this community is going to need to grow, and they need the space, so it's a good spot for it. Carrie?
My only concern is I am, as maybe some of you are too, quite familiar with the current food bank facility, which has a lot of warehouse space.
Yeah.
And there's pretty limited parking for the Senior Center up in there, so.
Correct, they would have to meet all site plan regulations, so they're looking at, there's issues, but I can tell you some of the things they're looking at is the loading dock and where it would go and how it would go, and so that's why they need the architect to work with the city to figure out how they could make this work.
So if we've got an interest in extending or modifying that lease, then they'll come back to us with their plan for our approval?
Yes.
But they're not asking the city to do the tenant improvements?
No. No, the improvements would be made by the Post Falls Food Bank.
Do we need an actual motion? I just, they're gauging interest, but do we need a motion, or?
I'm sure we have this listed on the agenda.
The council may direct staff to work with Post Falls Food Bank on potential acquisition
of the Senior Center land, the potential of a long-term lease of the property, some other cooperative agreement, or to do nothing.
So I would entertain a motion then.
Say so moved for a long-term lease or other as agreed between the city staff and the food bank.
And that will come back to you for final approval.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda, citizens' issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Todd, hang on, Mike, come on up. Are you going to, you coming forward? I didn't know if you were doing that or leaving on us, but come on up. Todd, we'll go to you. Name for the record again, Mike.
Thank you. Mike Posthurle, changing hats this time, is the president of Shore Pines Homewards Association. I was going to come in in a couple weeks and talk about this, but since he's here, I'm going to go ahead and embarrass him. If you're familiar with our association, our road there, we are one of the few places where you can actually drive up and look and see that there actually is a river out there. We have people walking their kids, walking their dogs, running, they'll all make it a trip down to kind of just to stop for a minute. A couple, up until a couple years ago, we had an elder gentleman that would come in his electric wheelchair and just sit there and have a snack. I understood he passed away unfortunately, but we have kind of a unique situation there. Part of that view that we have is a lift station, and a couple years ago, they decided that because it was like 35 years old, they had to start upgrading it. The initial engineers, the city that they hired, came in, and they had their plans for it, and I saw what they were going to do, and this was this monstrosity. And so began working with Andrew Arbeany, and he understood our concerns with saving the view, and along with the assistance of Adam Tate, we went and looked at other panels, found out ways to shrink it, found out ways to turn it, to lower it, and as a result, this thing is just, they just completed it. It turned out really nice. I'd encourage you to come by and see how nice it looked. He even worked with us to have it powder coated so it blends into the background. So rather than have, driving up, seeing this big thing, all you have is this little panel there to the side, and I'd just like to commend him before you guys, just that he really exemplified of a city working with the residents to try to come up with something in everybody's benefit, and, you know, while still protecting and doing his job, is, you know, protecting the city's costs and expenses, but he took in all the other considerations, and I'd like to publicly thank him for what he did, and just have you guys recognize what a great job he did on it. recognize what a great job he did on it, it was, took a long time to get it done, but he worked with us very well. So, thank you, Andrew, publicly, just say that for it.
Thank you, Mike, really appreciate you taking the time to bring that forward. Mr. Tondy? And yes, we are gonna make you give your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Todd Tondy, and I'm not representing the, any jurisdiction or anything, just myself. So, and I just heard comments this evening, and I just wanted to publicly state that there are maybe four hundred lots in the city that are platted, and many acreages that are not platted that are there, but for the large, a lot of those are owned by large developers, Viking Homes, Architerra, some of those big builders. Each subdivision, those builders only release two lots a month for sale, so they may have all of these lots, but they're only releasing two a month for sale. So, that's creating some of our housing issues and rising cost, so the more smaller subdivisions that can come forward where the independent builders can have a chance to build houses and everything else like that, we bring more to the market, and that's gonna help the demand on housing. So I just wanted to bring that attention to the, to the council, because I've heard that in a couple of other, when I've listened to them online and stuff like that, other issues where we have thirteen thousand lots or whatever that's available, it's two per subdivision, so Viking may have six subdivisions in Post Falls, and they're doing two houses per subdivision, so that's twelve. And those are, most of those large builders have waiting list of a hundred people on those waiting lists to get those two houses every month. So, those are just things that are going on within the housing market, that I just wanted you guys to hear that voice from, from the realtor side and from just having that go on.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So do you know why they're only doing?
I, not in their business, but just from what talking with them and doing, it's mostly because of labor, getting the labor to get the work done in a timely manner, and then controlling the cost on the, knowing what those infrastructures are. There's been some of the developers, Viking is one, that no longer pre-sales those lots. They wait till it's built, because of the cost of all of the infrastructure and the lumber and everything else like that, and getting appliances, they don't know when they're gonna get them sometimes, so they're, they're delaying that build time, and, and the build time on a house right now is between eight and ten months. So, and then if they're not able to get appliances or flooring or different things like that, it can extend from there. So Viking has chosen, and, and I'm, I'm hearing this from hearsay, so I, I don't, I'm not speaking on behalf of Viking or any of the other builders, I want to make that clear as well, but just talking with them once through some of our clients, that they are not selling them because if they sell it for four hundred thousand today, it may end up costing them more, so they're waiting until it's built, and then those are being treated as the other properties, and they're escalating above asking price of what the builder is asking for them anyway. So, we're just creating a lot of inventory shortage, and by getting these smaller subdivisions or smaller builders that are out there to help bring more inventory to the market sooner, will help this process. We still have people coming in, and you know, stopping those people is not gonna happen, but I mean, that's just something I just wanted to bring to the...
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd, yeah, appreciate it, appreciate it. Next item, administrative staff reports. We've got tertiary project update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Andrew Arbeany, Utilities Project Manager. I only hope that my presentation will be as entertaining and engaging as the raccoon.
We'll be via cue pictures.
I wish I added one. In all seriousness, tonight's presentation is really an update on the progress of the tertiary treatment project. You've heard about this project in various forms over the last three years, since 2018, when we started this endeavor, and we are now well underway, about seven months into construction. So, tonight, I actually have some help in making this presentation. John Beecham, Public Works Director, and myself will be splitting up some of the slides and going through the, really the highlights of the, of the project. I do want to recognize four key individuals for the project that have been involved since the very beginning. John led the efforts in getting the project started in 2017, 2018, really driving into that next phase of upgrades and improvements. So on the right of the screen is Adam Tate, Chief Wastewater Operator, John Beecham, Public Works Director, Craig Barnfall, Utilities Manager, and then myself there on the far left. Tonight's presentation's really broken down into four key areas. Provide a background, give a construction update, everybody likes pictures, so we've included several pictures, and speak a little bit on the contract side of things, where we are with the overall construction contract, the changes that we've had in the project, and then summing up the next steps and a few things that we still have to do regarding the, the project itself. With that, I will turn things over to John.
Good evening, as Andrew mentioned, I'm John Beecham, Public Works Director. We put these slides back in in case somebody's tuning into the presentation that hasn't heard one of the twelve other ones we've given on this, but we have some project goals, and the primary one is to satisfy our NPDES permit, which is our discharge permit into the river, and requires that we make these upgrades within ten years, so...
So to clarify, these improvements are not just to accommodate growth?
Correct.
They're also to enable us to meet the requirements that we are forced to meet?
Yeah, that's correct, and I actually looked into that today, the, the rough budget breakdown is about ten percent of the funding for capacity upgrades, and about ninety percent for adding new and better treatment capabilities to the plant. Some elements of this came out, or the elements of this project came out of the 2013 facility plan, which really was a three-year effort that started in about 2010, so this has been a, a long project in coming, and we are finally ready to build it. This map has also been shown on some of the other presentations with more checkmarks added. We are currently in the construction phase required to be done by the end of 2022, and then in 2024, our new permit limits that we're building this plant to achieve go into effect, so we have a two-year sort of tuning window. With that, Andrew promised pictures, and I don't want to steal the fun part.
This is my favorite part. Yeah, so I've got a few pictures that I'll scroll through. This is really the groundbreaking that started late last year, 2020, I think around November timeframe, one of the first major excavation that they, that they started with. This view is of a UV treatment building, so one of the three buildings that we're adding is new UV, new UV equipment. This picture itself shows the future outflow trough, so that is the start of the columns. For reference, that pipe at the bottom of the screen is forty-two inches in diameter. Doesn't look like it, but it's, it's rather large, three and a half feet, and that is the final effluent that'll discharge to the river. This is a view of some recent work in one of our existing infrastructures at the facility, oxidation ditch, and part of this project is we're converting this into a different use, so we were able to utilize the existing structure, the skeleton, if you will, and can do some additional work to utilize it in a different capacity. These next three pictures are, were actually taken last week from some drone footage, really show the most current progress. The membrane building on the right of the screen, rather large, you can start to see the, the layout take shape with the, the overall building size. There's a new clarifier tank to the left of the screen, and tertiary treatment. This is a close-up of the clarifier, more like a giant swimming pool, but you can see the two existing clarifiers off to the left, that it will resemble when it's completed. There's some equipment that go in that. And a final view of the, really captures most of the site with the tertiary treatment facility right there in the middle, that'll treat the water prior to the membrane filtration, provide that, that next level of treatment. My pictures are over, I will turn that back to John.
As a heads up, that was the end of the fun part of the presentation, so... I wanted to talk a little bit about the contracts we had in place and contracts we have in place. In 2018, you authorized us to pre-procure some equipment, that was the membrane equipment itself, and also the UV disinfection equipment. Those contracts did not change in value during the design phase, and they were assigned to Sletton Construction as part of Sletton's bid price, so Sletton was told, or all the bidders were told what the value was, and they had to build that number into their bids. So, these contracts were awarded by the city for the award price of like three point three million for the membrane equipment. That obligation now belongs to Sletton, outside of the design fees that did come out of those. In terms of Sletton's contract, the award amount was thirty-six point six million, and with a one point eight million dollar contingency, that was higher than I was comfortable being in charge of as a contingency, so that's why we're here to talk to you guys, is what's come up that's maybe used a little bit of that contingency, and then anything, any item that's over fifty thousand dollars, we'll also come talk to you about before we authorize a change. That being said, if it's an emergency and we're gonna spend more waiting than we would getting permission, we'll authorize it, and then come talk to you about what we did. There have been fourteen change orders to date, that number isn't necessarily reflective of anything, that's just documenting things that were slightly different than the documents. This isn't intended that you can see each of them, but I do want to highlight three change orders, these are the only three that are over ten thousand dollars at this point. The first one actually just incorporates design improvements that we discovered when we were designing the membrane facility, specifically with regard to the cleaning system, so it includes a spare tank heater because that's a critical piece of equipment, so just buying one of those in this, and also insulation for the several thousand gallon hot water tank. If you have insulation, stays hot longer, takes less energy to heat, works better. The second change order was to convert some inlet piping to stainless steel piping. This was just labeled incorrectly on the plans, so all the bidders bid it as ductile iron, should have been stainless, so we changed it to stainless. The cost for all six trains of that was ten thousand dollars. And also in addition, it was discovered that four additional electrical conduits are needed from one building to another with concrete encasement on them, so this is the work to add those. And again, that was not in the plans, none of the bidders included a price for it. It's needed, so it's now added to the project. And, and I'd be happy to talk, probably not now, but in detail about any of those change orders, if somebody would like more detail on what they were. I should note, some of them are deducts as well as increases, just documenting changes in the project. The summary of all that is that we have authorized eighty-nine thousand dollars in contingency funding out of that one point eight million, that's about almost five percent of the authorized contingency. We have paid Sletton for thirteen percent of the work that they've contracted for to date, so we're tracking in a good spot in terms of our contingency. Our rolling change order rate, which would be, if you were to guess what it would be at the end of the project, is about one point nine percent. I'll talk briefly about JUB's contract as well, JUB has both designed this project for us, and then they're helping us to manage the construction as a representative. The construction portion of that contract is three point six million with a hundred and twenty thousand dollar management reserve budget, so it's like a contingency, but it's already awarded to JUB, just slightly different how the contracting works on it. The one thing that's come up that's utilized this is some SCADA programming, so we knew going into this that we would need to hire a SCADA programmer to write the programs and integrate the city's SCADA system to control everything new that was being built. We weren't sure how we were going to hire that person, under what contractual mechanism we would do, so we asked, asked JUB to put together a scope for us, so that we could say, we need a consultant to do all this work, and they did that, they delivered that scope. So then we started considering how to go about procuring those services. There's three different places you could do that, you could assign the work to a contractor via change order, you could have the engineer subcontracted out, or we could have a single contract or a, a separate special contract with the city, and we would manage that contract. There's advantages and disadvantages to all of those. The, assigning it to the contractor provides very little flexibility, so that was kind of a non-starter for us. Having the engineer do it is what we ultimately recommend, and the reason is if we have it under our house, and there's coordination issues when we get to the end of the project, and the program, and the equipment all has to work at the same time, then it's us figuring out how to make those work. We can best manage that risk by having the engineer oversee that, so that's ultimately what we recommend on that, structuring it thus with the SCADA programming underneath JUB. To get that started, JUB selected a subconsultant, H2E, who is new to working for the city, our previous programmer has retired, by the way, I should have added that at the beginning. So JUB selected H2E as their preferred vendor to work with on this project, and we authorized almost fifty-three thousand dollars of JUB's management reserve for them to bring H2E in and get them up to speed. What that allows them to do is first get them familiar with the project, but also respond to any questions that Sletton has in the meantime. If we delay Sletton with their questions, then that comes back in the form of expensive change orders. We will be back with a request for a SCADA contract with H2E as a subconsultant to JUB later this spring or summer for the rest of that work. And that brings me to the last slide. We propose to bring these sort of updates to you folks every six months or so, we'd happily do it more or less often based on your feedback, and I would note, the project will run as currently scheduled through fall of '22.
Questions to John?
Or Andrew?
Or Andrew, I can, I do have one question.
Wait.
So that, like fifty-three thousand or the SCADA programmer, is that gonna come out of the contingency, or was that part of the contract?
So what we've done with that is we've utilized part of JUB's management reserve, so it comes out of the contingency we asked you for from the JUB contract. And, yeah, if, if there was a change to that in the future, we'd bring it back to you if we wanted to handle it differently.
So what I'm getting out of this presentation, that you're pretty happy with the process so far, and it's going smooth, and we're on schedule somewhat.
We're on schedule as far as we can tell, seven months into a, is it twenty-eight? Twenty-eight month project, so, so far, things are going well, but...
That's always nice to hear.
It's nice to hear, because that's the biggest contract y'all ever signed.
Good job.
Thank you, both, appreciate it. Good information. Next item up is a follow-up on the item I think I brought up two weeks ago, and it's limiting future public hearings.
I won't belabor this too long, because in my memo, I sort of outlined the things that staff met and discussed, ways to try to limit the, the number of land use hearings that we're having on any particular agenda. Quickly, the planning commission has started meeting a half hour earlier, that allows them hopefully to be done with their business a little bit earlier and get home. We're providing some snacks for them, so that as they take breaks through the night, they have a, a chance to have something to, to munch on, because they may not have gotten to dinner yet. We'll also be implementing a new rule where we won't start a new hearing after ten o'clock, so if we come to the ten o'clock hour and we haven't started another hearing, and there's one on that agenda, that will roll to the next meeting. Generally speaking, we only intend to schedule three public hearings for every planning commission meeting, and only two for every city council meeting. The difference is because you all have other things on your agenda, not just public hearing items. What I'm saying generally because we want to have some flexibility, if we know something's not gonna take long, and we currently, at this point, we're scheduling council hearings into October, there's that much of a backlog, so we want to have the flexibility to try to put more on an agenda as, as time allows, if there's going to be a short hearing item. Part of this is, the next couple items are really to allow staff to keep up with the flow of work as well. We don't want to be advertising the hearings until the staff report is completed, that we know it's ready to go, it's ready to get in, on an agenda, we're not gonna have to be scrambling at the last minute to have it ready to go. Similarly, with city council items, which, and these are largely going to be annexations or zone changes where we have required development agreement, those are our mixed-use zones. Our process change that we want to implement is having the, either the annexation agreement or the development agreement prepared in advance of the council hearing, so you have that at your disposal that night and ready to go, which will hopefully allow staff post-hearing to save some time trying to get that done. So, that's the gist of what we're working on, some of these are gonna require a change in our hearing resolution, I started working on drafting that today. Part of this is just internal processing, how we're gonna handle things, and we'll do that just through an SOP.
Questions? Questions, Mr. Wilson? I appreciate...
Pretty solid, yeah, especially for the, for the volunteer commissions. Thank you guys for, for easing up on them, and we, we kind of get paid to do this, I don't feel so bad if we gotta stay late, but you know, for P&amp;Z and, and those folks, man, that's just a lot, so we don't want to run those guys straight out of town either.
It is, it's a balance, I mean, there's no question that we are in a growth spurt that I don't think any of us have ever seen before, as I said, we're scheduling into October at this point, trying to, we're trying to balance the, the workload for the staff and for the volunteers, we're also trying to balance making sure that we can get people through the wickets in somewhat of a timely timeframe, because that's a due process concern as well, making sure that people can get in, in front of the decision-makers in a reasonable period of time.
Good, I appreciate you taking the time to look, look at and come up with recommendations.
I remember when I was on planning and zoning, and I was the chair, and it was like, most of our meetings were less than twenty minutes, so it's nice to see we're adjusting to the needs that we have now.
Well, you know, it's, we're seeing this huge growth spurt, and I really don't know where everybody's coming from, because I'm seeing it, I was back in North Carolina last week, and it was the same thing. I could not believe the number of apartment buildings going in, and it just, you know, I thought, well, this is somewhat unique to us, and it's not, so whatever we can do to lessen the load on, especially the volunteer committees that are, commissions that are putting in the time, I appreciate, and on staff. You know, staff gets to come to meetings now every Tuesday night, and if they're going for four or five hours, you know, that's, that's pretty tough on staff, so I appreciate anything you can do to help alleviate that. Next item up, Mayor, council comments, I'd just say that I'm not really sure, because I have, no longer have children in school, but I think school's almost out, if it's not out, and not out yet? Okay, well, it's gonna be out soon, and the weather's nice, and you're gonna have a bunch of littles running around, so please drive carefully, and watch speed limits, pay attention to the crossings, there's still a lot of intersections that aren't marked, and there's a lot of kids that don't pay attention to the marked intersections, so be defensive and let's protect the lives of the littles that we have in the community. Council comments?
I would like to...
I would like to thank Mike for coming out and publicly thanking Andrew for going above and beyond. And I sincerely mean this from the bottom of my heart. When citizens come forward and have complaints, I listen to what they say, but I do know that there are many, many times when positive things happen. And like you did, Mike, I would just really like to thank you for coming forward. And Andrew, thank you for going the extra mile. I know most of the staff does, but I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give everybody kind of a brief update, the committee that I'm on around growth. To be honest with you, I never remember the name of it. It's Growth and Housing and stuff. But it is a coalition of all the cities in Cootney County and the county, and they're, you know, we're gathering information from the public. One of the things that we did, we put out a survey. We got about 2,600 answers back from that. Key, the number one thing on that survey was trying to preserve open space. So we are, our committee is in the process of gathering more information on preserving open space on the prairie. We do have another meeting Monday, next Monday, I think? So I'll know a little bit more of that. Some of the research, this is just something that kind of surprised me because we know that, we've seen the articles, there's 14% housing crisis across the United States. As the mayor pointed out, it's North Carolina. I talked to people around the state, Pocatello, they're going through the same thing, the Magic Valley, same thing, Boise, the same thing. Surprisingly, Lewiston is not. So I guess we can send some people to Lewiston.
No, because City of Lewiston will not allow any changes. But that's another.
Yeah, I don't know. They're not growing very fast. But one of the things I found out in my research is, you know, why do we have this housing crisis? I had to look myself in the mirror. It's because of people like me, of the boomer generation. The boomer generation, the largest generation ever, isn't dying fast enough. Unfortunately, we're still staying in our houses. We're not emptying them out so that the younger generation can come and move into our house. So now I have to blame myself for the problems we're having with growth. I'll leave it at that.
So what are you suggesting now?
I'm not suggesting anything.
All the recommendations.
Glad I'm Gen X now.
I cooperate with that. I've lived in my house for 34 years too, so. And I've lived to be 100, so sorry.
Thank you very much. Next item up, we do need an executive session tonight.
How long?
Yes, 15 minutes.
Fifteen? I move to enter into an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but intimately likely to be litigated, that no action will be taken, and the session shall last around 15 minutes.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilham?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
orders?
Aye.
Where's your passes? Thank you. We'll enter executive session.[1087.23]